Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, February 26, 2025, open. Call the order. So pursuant, notice of option to recess into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.02. Notice is hereby given to the members of the commission and to the general public that at this meeting, the commission may vote to go into executive session, which will be, which will not be open to the public for legal advice and discussion with the commission's attorney on any item listed on this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. If we can do roll call?
Carol Mandino.
Present.
Christine Sheehy.
Present.
CJ Lukey.
Present.
Mary Norton.
Present.
Ian Sharp.
Present.
Megan Weller.
Here.
And Joshua Marr.
Present.
Thank you.
We'll go into public comment. At this time, any member of the public may address the commission on any subject within our jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the commission today. Due to open meeting laws, the commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion of the agenda. To address the commission on an agenda, no, on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for me to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. Do we have any public comment at this time? Hearing none. We'll move to the approval of the minutes of January 22, 2025.
I'd move to approve the minutes from January 22, 2025.
So Mary has moved to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
And CJ has seconded. Is there any discussion or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So the minutes have been approved as written. So we're going to go into general business. Item 5A, land availability suitability study and code analysis project, code concepts report. Because I'm looking at the minutes, we are going to go into discussion on our feedback of, from the commission prior, prior to the drafting of zoning code text amendments for missing middle housing types, which could be duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes, as required by HB 2721.
Yay. I was like, uh oh, I'm not prepared to. I mean, I, I could wing it. Kidding. So tonight, we're here to talk about middle housing. I'm so glad you're all here just for this, but I really appreciate your time. This is kind of a unique and different approach. Nothing has been drafted at this point. This isn't even our legally noticed work session. We will have another one of these. I do not expect that this amendment will be to you until, you know, probably after council break in August, September. So there is definitely some time and there's reasons for that in which I'll get to in this presentation, but we are required to make some changes to our zoning code based on the results of House Bill 2721, which was adopted last session. It necessitates that we enact this ordinance before January 1, 2026. So it's just about time we get ready and start talking about what this one requires. Of all of the bills that came out from last session, this is the one I think that we're all struggling with a little bit in terms of how to implement it. But I, I feel like, I feel like we were, we're going to get to a good approach and we'll get there. But essentially, we need to allow the construction of duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and townhomes as a permitted use on all lots zoned for single-family residential. We can talk a little bit more about what that looks like. What I would tell you is, is that for the most part, our zoning code, even though we have districts that are labeled as single-family, they always allow land uses above that. So even in our single-family residential zone, we already do allow duplexes. We, we don't allow the triplex form and we don't allow the fourplex form, but we do allow multifamily. So when you look, for example, on McMillan Mesa and you see a multifamily product that is, kind of looks like cottages, I've heard somebody say barracks. They don't look like barracks. I like them. They are actually single individual units or duplexes, but there's a lot of them on the same property. So we allow that. We just don't allow the form right now of a triplex and a fourplex, but you, you could potentially get four units on one lot in the R1 zone, for example. So we have a code that is already pretty flexible, but is, does not go as far as this bill requires us to. So the meat is right here in the middle of the slide in these two bullet points. The way this bill is drafted, so of course, it's all of us over 75,000. When they say 75,000, that means us, that means Flagstaff. They want us in this. So it's all lots zoned for single-family residential use within one mile of the municipality's central business district. We don't have one. And at least 20% of any new development of more than 10 contiguous acres. Yay. Uh huh. So what does this look like? If we were trying to implement this the way that it's written, we will need to create new overlay districts. An overlay district is when you take a zone, because, so let me back up. Every zoning district has to be uniform in the way that it treats all projects within the same zoning district. So the only way to add this provision onto certain areas with those zones would be with an overlay district. Does that make sense? Okay. So we would put a bubble, there would, in this bubble, that's where we would allow those triplexes and fourplexes. Same would be true for the new development. So one, if we go this route, we'll need to be able to define a central business district. And two, likely what we'll have to do is go through our vacant land inventory. And luckily, we, we do have a land availability study done. So we would probably start with that and start working with those property owners who would want to most likely have this. We would try to reach out to those individual property owners to see who would want this applied to their property. For new development, I think we don't have to necessarily, we don't have to limit it to 20%. We could do it on more of the new development areas or the vacant areas in town if, if that's where we want to go. Just to reiterate what the missing middle also does, because it's not just about allowing those housing types, it also says we can't discourage the development of middle housing through requirements or actions that individually or cumulatively make it impractical. So there's always tricks in a zoning code where you can say, oh, this is permitted, but if I do this, 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 and this, probably unlikely that you'll ever build it. So we can't do that. We can't be cute and smart. Restrict middle housing types to less than two floors. For the most part, these zoning districts that are going to be impacted all for, except for one, generally have a height limitation of 35 feet. So there, there shouldn't be an issue there. We cannot restrict middle housing types to a floor area ratio of less than 50%. So currently, we do not use FAR on residential. When you did hear us talk about the last cap and the, the code analysis project, it is encouraging us to use floor area ratio. This is probably why I think that this will, will be one of the reasons we sort of delay because we'll want to follow in alignment with what we're hearing in terms of the cap. But I, I have a feeling that where we're going to go is adding a floor area ratio in addition to these requirements. And if you have a question on floor area ratio, let me know and I'll tell you what it is.
Yep. I'm sorry. I do have a question on it. It's just stuck in my head. So I'm not even hearing half of the stuff because it's stuck there. So it's, that legislation is only impacting anything within a mile of the downtown radius or the central business district and any new development?
20% of new development. That's more than 10 contiguous acres, yes. But so, but there's some buts to that. So follow me. I'm, but we cannot set restrictions or permit anything that middle housing different than we do single-family dwellings. So right now, we take, do we do duplexes? We don't. So single-family and duplexes go straight to building permit for us. Anything above that is considered multifamily and does go through a concept and site plan review. This would change that. They would go straight to building permit.
So all of those would go straight to building permit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. Townhomes are the one exception. Townhomes are basically attached housing units on individual lots. So there's a, townhomes are usually approved through a subdivision plat. So there is a subdivision plating process. This does not exempt them from that subdivision plating process, but we already allow attached single-family. So it's really, really not going to be an issue here. We cannot require owner occupancy of any structure. We cannot require any structure to comply with the commercial building code or to contain a fire sprinkler.
Can I go back to that?
Yep.
You know, reading the newspaper with different mayors from northern Arizona who have written to the legislature to talk about?
Short-term rentals?
Yep. Is our mayor doing anything about that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
They actually, we're just at the Housing Commission. I believe they're discussing a resolution on March 4.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So we cannot require any structure to comply with the commercial building code or to contain a fire sprinkler. So what I can tell you is there's actually no such thing as a commercial building code. So this, this is a non sequitur, non-worry for us. We cannot require more than one off-street parking space per unit. That will have some impacts on our code. So for all of the missing middle housing types, which, or the middle housing types, we also need to have a healthy, there'll be more work to do. So keep this in mind. I'm just trying to get question number one answered first, but you know, should this apply to single-family homes? If this is specific to duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, and fourplexes, but then does it make sense to require single-family homes to have more than one parking space? Not sure. So we can have that conversation as we build on this.
Do, do they give a, so let's go back to the ratio of less than 50%. So what would we be talking about in size for these?
Sure.
What, and, and can you define middle housing?
Middle housing for this particular bill is duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and townhomes.
It has no other definition other than that?
Correct.
Okay.
So the definition doesn't include single-family?
Okay. Mary has a question?
Yeah, before you leave this slide. So let me just, so I can reiterate. I'm assuming the goal of this bill was to create housing and more affordable housing, an abundance of housing, but yet they're not going to, they'll allow you to require owner occupancy.
Okay. Um, so let me tell, talk about floor area ratio. Carol, I live on a 9,000 square foot lot. If 50% floor area ratio, the largest structure that I could build on my lot would be 4,500 square feet.
Thank you.
The one thing that I do want to point out is that this does not change any of the density standards for any of the zoning districts. Okay. So on my R1 zoned lot, that's 9,000 square feet, I still can only have one dwelling unit.
It is just to create a variety of product?
This is to allow a greater diversity of product, but I couldn't build a fourplex because I don't have the density, I don't have the acreage to allow a fourplex.
So what would the acreage be? Again, can you go over that again?
Sure.
The acreage would be?
So in order, in the R1 zone, you would need 12,000 square feet in order to have two units. It's a, that's a rough approximate because we do round up in terms of density.
So where we already have some duplexes, the sunny side area and the Christmas tree area, are those lots 1,200, 12, 12,000 square feet?
No, they're zoned differently with different density standards.
Back in the day.
So Upper Green Law also, Upper Green Law is, is also, has some duplexes in it. That just goes back to the 60s from when those were developed. They are legal non-conforming today.
So. I don't have a question, I guess. I'm just trying to mull this over in my mind because I'm, I'm not opposed to duplexes and fourplexes and triplexes.
Me either. But, but just remember that the last conver, the last conversation we had about the last cap project.
Right.
While this bill does not require us to change densities, we are actively recalibrating our density standards for each of the zoning districts. So while it's not, I just want to let you know that while it's not possible today to do a duplex on most R1 zone, regular subdivided lots, that may be changing in the immediate future. And that, I mean, that's, that's the direction that a, that a lot of this would be going in.
Right. And so that, that means that we could be changing that acreage from a 12,000 square foot lot to a smaller lot. You know, and, and I, I would like to know what the lot sizes were back in the 60s for the duplexes and, and Upper Green Law.
In Upper Green Law, they range, they're on a, they're in between, they're all over in size. Green Law's not uniformly one size. They're about 7,500 to about 9,000 square feet.
What about Christmas tree?
I don't know Christmas tree off the top of my head.
Okay. My, my first home was in Christmas tree and, yeah. Okay, CJ?
I'm sorry to ask questions when you're trying to get through this, but they're just there. So.
Conversations are good.
Okay. So, okay. What about the historic overlay area? If you were to take down a historic home, could you put a fourplex?
We're going to get there.
Okay.
But the answer is yes. Um, so let's talk a little bit.
So I have another question.
Sure.
Christina?
I have a question. I noticed in the.
I have a question. I noticed in the House bill, they did not talk about deed restrictions.
That's correct.
And when you look at majority of older subdivisions and even the newer ones, they only allow one single-family home per lot. Now, sometimes they'll say casitas and they'll try to define them, et cetera. So the legislature can't regulate deed restrictions. So what happens there?
Nothing.
That means they're done. If they've got a recorded deed restriction, they'll show up on your title report, scheduled deed.
And I just want to make sure Ian doesn't have any questions, but.
I have no questions.
Thank you.
Moving on. So the bill defines central business district as an area or series of areas. So it doesn't have to just be one designated by a municipality that are primarily non-industrial and that attract community activity, including the entire geographic area that the municipality is officially designated as its downtown or equivalent. We haven't really officially designated a downtown. We have a downtown improvement district. You know, we have an area that we generally think of as our downtown, so we would absolutely have to create a central business district around that area, but we could create others as we have other locations in the city that would meet sort of this terminology. The reason why this is important is the first group that I reached out to was our economic development team. There is one other statute where the definition of a CBD is important, and that's the GIPlet, the Government Property Lease Excise Tax, which is an incentive for working with businesses. So when I reached out to our economic development group, they would encourage us that if we go this route of defining CBD, that we don't just do one, that we have multiples. And you could see that they, their off the top head, off the top of their head conversation would be Aspen Sawmill, the Milton Corridor, the Fore Street Corridor, the Mall, and possibly the Marketplace. So you could see that if you started to build a one-mile buffer around all of these places, it does start to add up. So like I said, we don't have central business district, but we have a central business zoning district. So I grabbed that as an example because I was like, what does one mile actually look like in reality? So this is just a zoning district that I picked. If we were actually to define the central business district, I would think it would actually be a little bit larger. It might not be as uniform, but you can see how far one mile goes. This is Cheshire or not Cheshire. It's, why do I always say it wrong? Coconino Estates is all the way up here. You've got Townsite, you've got Plaza Vieja, you have Southside, you have Cherry Hill. It goes all the way up to McMillan Mesa.
Does, like when you use that or as you work through picking an area, would the downtown have to be dead center? Could you move that over?
We could absolutely move it over.
Okay, because I mean, right now it would take into account Sawmill, right? Sawmill's included in that.
Yeah, right now it does take in.
If it were to skew toward the east, would it?
They could also over, the one-mile buffers could also overlap. So again, it would be a one-mile from whatever we we pick. And I would assume that there, if we had picked multiples, they would overlap. So this is what this looks like. And of course, what's important to note is these like yellow areas with the dots, those are all a zoning district called R1N. They apply to our historic areas and they have a, the density limitation, the same as the medium-density residential zone. So they're twice as much as a regular R1 zoning district. So the density or the areas that would absolutely attract and would absolutely allow up to a fourplex in many instances would be those ones with the dots. So there was a new bill that was introduced at the end of January to exclude the historic areas. It's already dead. It's gone. So that's what the bubble would have looked like without all of the historic areas. But you can also see the historic areas that fall within the bubble. So the question for you all is, how should the city move forward on this amendment? The cap, which we presented previously, the consultants that we've hired, they are suggesting that we pursue the citywide. So do we want to pursue the citywide or do we want to go the bubble route all over? Which we can do, and that's why I'm asking this early on, because it will take a substantial amount of time if we go the bubble route to get those developed design, come up with the legal descriptions and all the good stuff. And of course, we'll have to go out and engage the community on what should be those central business districts. If not citywide, what would make sense for the downtown? What other areas would you suggest? And then for new development areas, what should we consider?
So can you give the reason why the consultant thinks it should be citywide?
Sure, because one of the things that we looked at in the the code analysis project, we did a vulnerability study of neighborhoods that are at a higher risk of gentrification just based on what their current zoning categories are. And so the neighborhoods that are at a higher risk of gentrification are those neighborhoods that already allow a higher density. Those include our historic neighborhoods, but those include Southside, north of the downtown, and Sunnyside. So and that's, that's a, that's not all of them. You know, there's a healthy conversation in that report on the why those neighborhoods are more vulnerable. That is also going into part of that density discussion about, you know, if we want to choose to keep our single-family neighborhoods pretty low density and exclusively only single-family, then we're going to just only increase the gentrification and intensity of redevelopment in those areas where it's already occurring.
Mary?
Since this is be somewhat of a subjective decision on where these bubbles are created, does that put the city in danger of Prop 207?
So I've talked about this with our attorney to a degree. We know, the the limit, the the doing the bubbles doesn't really put us at a risk because we're just, we're giving more entitlements to those properties rather than less. So it'd be hard to make an argument to say that we're reducing the value of the property.
Because in essence, you'd be increasing their density?
Well, not increasing the density, but increasing building types, yeah.
Has the Housing Commission looked at this?
I will be at the Housing Commission tomorrow. I have taken this to the Heritage Preservation Commission.
And?
They supported going citywide.
Okay, and then, and I would probably be supportive of it going citywide, but I have a question. So could a developer approach several homes, let's say in Sunnyside? And they they approach four different homes that are next to each other to sell to them. Could they then build a fourplex or a triplex on those lots?
Yes, and they do now.
Okay, so but but they could approach any neighborhood and try to get the homes that are next door to each other to sell to build something like that?
You know, I think financially, though, you'd have to.
It wouldn't be practical.
It's not going to be practical in most neighborhoods. I mean, Flagstaff, Flagstaff's housing stock for the most part is really good. And the housing stock that is available is very highly priced. And so I think what would be more likely to happen is to see a larger home divided into smaller units. That's more practically how I would think that transition would happen, which would then keep those structures more in character with those neighborhoods.
CJ?
I support the citywide as well, but the big thing for me is what you brought up is that if they're not owner occupied and they're going to make them into short-term rentals. So I think just tracking that as that progresses.
Will do. I mean, I I would highly recommend going and listening to the Housing Commission's discussion on the short-term rentals. It was interesting. It was not what I thought.
And the the discussion they had with regard to the resolution? I did listen to that one. You know, my first gut reaction was bubbles because we could really move the bubbles where we want to really encourage diversity of housing types and expand those housing types and maybe protect those sensitive areas that are subject to gentrification. However, we wouldn't hit all the areas of development that we would want to encourage that, like on the very southwest side of the city, the state land, the big state land parcel and where the hospital was going to move and all those kinds of things. So as I came full circle in my mind, I I would have to go with citywide as well.
So I do, I I have another question. So as I'm driving 40 and you look over, it's by 4th Street. There's, are those fourplexes? What what are those? Do you know what I'm talking about? You can see them right from the highway. Not the Rio, but the.
Fourth and Butler, around there.
Fourth and Butler, yeah.
Those are townhomes. That's where I live.
Talking about the the Brookfield Little Bungalow Homes?
The what?
They're really visible, those are mostly visible from, I don't know, I don't drive I-40.
They're what?
Wouldn't be visible from 40, sorry.
No, they're right visible from I-40. It's by 4th Street and Butler.
Right at 4th Street and Butler, there's the new apartment complex that's being constructed.
Back a little bit and then it goes, it goes toward 40. The newer.
Oh, those are condominiums. Those are single-family homes.
No, I'm not talking about those. I'm talking about. Yeah, you can see them from I-40.
South of Butler or north of Butler?
It's nor, north of Butler.
They're apartments.
No, they're
You might be talking.
North of that.
I think you're talking about Forest Springs. Those are townhomes.
Forest Springs are townhomes?
That's Forest Springs.
Ian knows.
Oh, okay. Ian?
That's where I live.
Oh, okay. And what are those considered?
They're townhomes.
A townhome? Okay, I wasn't sure. I I thought, because they sometimes.
They're they're just paired.
Yeah, so I thought they were maybe duplexes or fourplexes, but they're townhomes? Okay, thank you.
I'm going to interject, and I would say my vote would be for citywide. It seems the most straightforward and most equitable.
I I couldn't hear you.
He said citywide because it's the most straightforward and most equitable.
Okay, and Josh has a question or a comment?
Yeah, I have a question about the parking requirement with the off-street, single off-street. What's the current requirement for the, that the city has?
It depends. So really, if you're building a, it it's going to be based on the size of the unit. So that's the one thing about density that's a little troubling for us is is that we treat a studio and a one-bedroom unit the same way we treat a four and a five-bedroom unit, except in terms of parking. So for the medium, which is where like the, a two-to-three bedroom unit is always giving us two parking spaces. It drops down for studio and one bedroom and picks up based on going exceeding like in the four and the five-bedroom range. But the average is probably two. If you really calculated it, the average is exactly 1.75, if that helps. But 1.75 rounds to two.
My concern is really, you know, I'm thinking about, you know, some of the the neighborhoods in the, in town that are already impacted by a sort of a lack of parking and a lack of off-street parking. And you know, if this is just something that's going to exacerbate that, I know that it, this is state law ultimately, so there's not a lot that we can work around, but you know, I think something we'll have to think about sometime in the future.
So I I do want to bring up the cap and what we're looking at because we are looking at parking reductions to incentivize housing overall is a key. And there's a large discussion about the parking movement and how much parking adds to the cost of housing. But we're trying to take the holistic approach because we technically don't allow on-street parking overnight five months of the year. And that's a big part of the conversation we need to look at and we need to resolve. And we are working on that, just not part of this text amendment. So I want to, I just want to let you know that we are working on it. We recognize it. And in those areas where parking is difficult and stressed, based on its proximity to commercial areas or a university campus, then you know, there are other tools that can be used, like parking districts to help and permitting systems that can be used. And that's what several other cities have done. It's it's not a perfect system.
Alex?
I just want to comment too that, you know, the the state, the state statute is telling us what the minimum needs to be. We can only require one parking space per unit. I think there could be developments where a developer says that's not going to fly. I'm not going to be able to sell these or rent these with only one parking space and that they might choose to provide more. So I, again, I think it's, you know, it's just that required minimum. And I don't know that there would necessarily be any restrictions if a developer wanted, chose to provide more.
And I, I'm sorry, I would see that being almost a tandem, like they would probably do tandem parking instead of a.
That's one of the things we're going to have to talk about because really we limit how you can use tandem, but that could be part of the conversation. What I'd also try to tell you is is there are direct ways in which we regulate things and there are indirect ways in which we regulate things. And that's where I would push back as well to the FAR. What FAR can do is while allowing these housing types in in neighborhoods, it also can limit the amount, right? So one of the middle housing types that we've struggled with are those that go in those dense areas that tend to be four or five bedrooms each unit with two parking spaces. And that's where we run into the biggest trouble. And so the FAR will actually help us balance that by allowing more units, but maybe also keeping them in the smaller side.
And that was going to be my question. Can we limit, when we're doing this, can we limit that they're two-bedroom or a certain square footage?
We can't do the bedroom, but we can do the FAR, which we'll get to square footage. But the developer kind of gets to pick and choose. So they could build one five-bedroom unit, maybe, you know, one one-bedroom unit based on their allowed FAR.
Okay, and.
So and what happens if they go with a five-bedroom, five-bath unit and it triggers HOH?
So HOH is we, that, there is a problem with HOH with the parking specifically, so.
Would really be the only hangup is that the parking in high-accenty housing would be triggered.
But they'd still need a conditional use permit, and so you would still have some ability there. So I'm sure if they, if somebody came in with a 20-bedroom HOH project, 20 bad bathrooms and two parking spaces, you might have, you might have some feedback on that, maybe.
Madam Chair, I have one question, Tiffany. On, I see this in my own neighborhood. The, I didn't look up on the code, the town code, on parking in front of houses. Like the house diagonally across the street has five cars parked out front of the house and it's 8,000 square foot lot. The guy next door to me has three cars parked in the street, two cars in the driveway, one hangs over the sidewalk. And having run code enforcement in another municipality, I would get lots of calls and we would have to send code people out to cut down on the amount of parking in the front yards. Now, one jurisdiction I worked in required a 20-foot apron in front of every garage door to accommodate parking, because if they were too short, the cars hang over the sidewalk and or then we looked at some other communities, it got pretty cute, where the parking apron was maybe six feet and the people were parking sidewoods, parallel to the garage. So how do we look at our town code on parking? And I would assume we have some about parking in the front yard, and it doesn't look like it's really enforced, but.
It's why, right now, we require garages to have a 25-foot setback. And that's why we were, so the house can have a 15-foot setback. And that's why we were, so the house can have a 15-foot setback because we're trying to do the non-garage-dominated design. But that 25-foot garage setback gets you the driveway you need to not overhang the pan. You know, we just, we have the driveway pan. You have, we have an evol, evolution of housing in Flagstaff, developed over many different years and different zoning codes. And so you have different, you have different, you have areas that some meet it and some don't. You know, our neighborhood is 70s, 80s and so it's under a code a long time ago. But yes, we do have provisions for it. We do want to make sure we have ample driveway space where usually our engineers are right on us in terms of making that, the issue.
So when you start adding up all these lot restrictions that come from other areas, like limited parking, the driveway aprons, all that's going to eat into what people can do with these. This is going to be hard. You know, I can see why they're trying to implement this, but when you get down of doing your site planning, these are going to be pretty challenging.
Yep.
So could the, the builder, the builder could decide, okay, I may only give one parking space, but over here in the development, if they're doing kind of a development, they could give guest parking?
So we, yeah, and we do have guest parking requirements right now. So that'll change for this, it'll only apply to basically five units and above is where we'll need to go. But a developer can always do more parking, they just can't do less than the minimum. However, we do have a requirement in our code on certain sizes of structures. I just want to clarify, if your building is over 10,000 square feet, you cannot exceed the minimum parking by more than 5% without going into a structure because we certainly do not want to encourage the overparking of sites either.
So I don't know if you're done with your presentation?
I am done with my presentation.
What do you want from us today?
So far, I've gotten the general feedback, citywide is the general. Now, there'll be time to change your mind, but the reason I'm out here early is because I, if I do need to go the route of CBD, I have a lot of work to do, so.
Okay, do you have any other? Do we need to provide you with any other feedback today on this? Is that what you were looking for?
That's mostly what I'm looking for, but I want you to keep in mind what these other things look like. And so as we move through this process, if you have concerns. The other reason why I'm going to delay is because there is likely to be a bill to modify this. And so I do want to wait till this session is over to see if another bill comes up. I mean, even though that bill died on the historic preservation, it could come back as a striker bill somewhere else. My understanding was that they did not meet a timeframe or a specific deadline for getting some, the next level in. And so it could reappear as a striker bill. And so we want to be able to adjust accordingly so that we're not having to rewrite this one.
And then I think Mary had a question and then CJ.
So as far as when this would like take effect, takes effect next January?
It ha, we have to adopt something by next January or it goes into effect by itself. And that, I do not know how to implement, just the way it's written.
Is it any development application that would come in after next January? Would have to provide this variety of housing or-
They don't have, no, it, this doesn't make anybody have to do anything. It's just, we have to, we as a city have to allow it.
Okay, so all of these new areas that are greenfield spaces that are in the planning stages and, and all, it's really going to be up to the developers and builders whether they choose to change their product type or not?
Yep.
And CJ and then Christine?
So this is, I know I've brought this up before and maybe it's possible in this legislative term. It really bugs me that they always choose 75,000 as the population cutoff. If they chose 100,000, we'd be exempt.
I know, they're specifically doing it to include us.
I know, so why aren't we out there fighting it? You know, it's like, that, that's what I'm saying.
So we all have, I mean, we have the, our lobbyists that represent all of the divisions of the city and all of the goals. I will tell you that I, you know, in general, there are a lot of really great things about this bill. It's just a little sloppy in its execution that make it a little tough, right? And we have some issues that nowhere else in the state of Arizona. And the legislatures are never going to ever really completely understand in depth. And they'll never make a decision one-off just because of us, right? If we tell them like, hey, look, we don't allow on-street parking five months of the year, like this is a problem for us. They're unlikely to, 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 to deal with us and we absolutely do-
What they would probably do is outlaw restricting on, on-street parking, so.
I would never say that we joke about, like whatever we do, the legislature will require us to do the opposite, but it does happen from time to time.
But for me, it's just equity. You know, you have Sedona with 10,000 people, you've got Paradise Valley with 18,000. They get exempted and they're two of the richest enclaves in Arizona. But yet, everybody else has to comply with this, so.
But I would tell you too, I mean, one of the more surprising facts I learned was 18% of Sedona's housing is short-term rentals, only 3.6% is ours. Yep, so Sedona's got it far worse than we do.
Christine?
I just have one just observation. When you look at like along the old Route 66, especially on the east side of town, there is so much older motels and those are the properties with the acreage. And, you know, when we're doing our land use studies, I was reading that, if the commercial districts allowed apartments by right, you might see a lot of that stuff get redeveloped.
I'll be here next month with that amendment, so.
Oh, good.
We, so we, the housing group has bond funds specifically for adaptive reuse. And we have seen a lot of transition of our older motels into a, into transitional housing and other housing stock. So the, the housing team needs to come up with policy and procedure for delivering those bond funds to projects. And we're trying to partner with them with a text amendment. That's the only reason I giggled is because you're, it's like you read my mind. But we'll be coming to you soon with that.
Yeah, I'm talking about more private sector.
Oh, this will do both.
Would do both, okay.
This will do both, but that is sort of the instigator of the why, but this will absolutely do both.
And yeah, what would happen to those hotels and motels if we just didn't have short-term rentals? Then they could all flourish and grow and, yeah.
I, I mean, some of those hotels, like I, one community I worked in, we had similar situation. It was an older strip and it was 1960s. And some of the buildings had really good arc, mid-century modern architecture that should be, you know, kept. The others, pretty rundown and people that try to remodel them. I did a 64 Ranch, the plumbing, the electric, all those things are not up to code. And some of those, I, I talked to some brokers on Friday, commercial brokers. Some were familiar with here. And a lot of those, similar to this one project, or one, I worked in economic development, trying to help development for a city. And we were developing 1960s corridors. One of the other problems, the depth of the lots is too narrow and a lot of the ownership is owned by families for extended years. So it's all free and clear, so it's all cash income for them. So they have little to no incentive to sell or to allow an assemblage of more than one property. But I'm thinking if some of these were permitted by right to put multifamily in some of these commercial sites, you may, and then that's more appropriate. You have, you know, utilities, you have bus routes, you, you know, as opposed to what they're trying to do out on Lake Mary Road. And, you know, then it's up to the owners if they want to sell. But that was just my thoughts, I'm glad we're on the same page, thank you.
But then we're going to get everybody who says, why are we building, you know, if they're huge developments like we have in the downtown corridor and near NAU, they're not going to agree with that, I'll just say it that way.
Again, it's my goal to make everybody just a little bit unhappy.
Just a little bit.
Just a little bit. All right, anything else? Thank you so much for your time, thanks for the conversation and have a great weekend.
Great, thank you. Wanted to make sure Ian didn't have anything else.
No, I got nothing.
Okay. So then the next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items to and from commission members. Welcome Joshua. And? We have a hand up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tyler is, is, I see is in the audience. And he had also, he had sent an email to the CD or the P&amp;Z email. I didn't see it until right before this meeting, otherwise I'd forward it to you. I will forward it to you, but Tyler, if you want to talk about, about the email you sent or if you're happy with me just forwarding that to the commission, I can do that.
Yeah, hey, this is Tyler Denham, live in the South Side neighborhood and just reaching out as a private resident. I'm fine with you just forwarding-
Tyler, can you speak a little louder? It's really hard to hear in the room.
Oh, sorry about that. Is that, is this better?
That is better, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with you forwarding that email. I actually just wanted to chime in to answer a question that came up earlier in the conversation. So Tiffany raised the same question at the Heritage Commission meeting about the bill mentioning commercial code and there is no such thing as a commercial code. I actually know someone down at the Capitol familiar with these issues and I asked them about that. And apparently the language in the bill is a little bit sloppy, but what that was referring to is the International Building Code, the IBC. So it's basically saying you can't apply the IBC to those missing middle housing types. You have to apply the international resident code, residential code, the IRC. Just wanted to chime in and answer that question as it seemed helpful.
Okay, and Tiffany?
Thanks so much. It wasn't a question and I've conferred with our in-house folks and our building officials and the building officials have met. The code, or the statute is not clear that that means that it is the international residential code and that's a huge leap to make in language that saying a commercial building code is de facto the international residential code. So most building officials are not in agreement and are not pursuing in the same direction.
Okay, well, that's really helpful to know, actually. I may pass that information along. Sounds like some cleanup may be needed.
Oh, thank you.
And that's all the commentary I have, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I think when Tiffany is talking about the international residential code, that's what's applied now to like a single-family residential. And once you get to multifamily, like three and above, it's the international building code. So just to clarify that, by saying a commercial building code, the position the city is in is that it is not clear that that would refer to the international building code and that you would have to not apply that to these residential projects.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to make sure there's nothing to and from commissioners or from staff? Or is there another question?
I see we have other people in the audience if anyone else wants to, to talk. If not.
Seeing no one raise their hands. Okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the presentation, Tiffany, it was great. Thank you for answering all our questions. And Alex, thank you for chiming in.